Ready? Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Now let's all give a pledge of allegiance and a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose justice for all.
Thank you. First, we have a proclamation. Anyone here for Minority Mental Health Awareness? Good, how are you? Whereas Minority Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 2008 to bring attention to the unique challenges faced by racial and ethnic minorities in the United States. According to data from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration 2021 National Survey on Racial Use of Health, the prevalence of any mental health, any mental illness was highest among adults reporting two or more races. And whereas the National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month raises awareness about how culture, ethnicity, and race all play a role in the way that each person experiences the world. These factors, among others, have profound effects on mental health, especially in Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And whereas in honor of Darius Jamal Williams, the city of Leavenworth raises awareness so that more people might reach out for help by calling or texting 988. If they or someone they know is in crisis, look out for warning signs and others to make sure people feel heard and understood. And whereas Minority Mental Health Awareness Month is a month where Leavenworth citizens work together to bring awareness to the unique needs of minorities in our city, county, state, and country. So the citizens feel heard, loved, and understood. Through awareness, we can build a stronger community and build generations of compassionate Leavenworth citizens. And some contributing factors to the high rates of mental illness among minorities are the cost of care, inadequate insurance coverage, inaccessibility to high-quality mental health facilities, and lack of providers from one racial, one racial or ethnic group and cultural statement. Now therefore, by Nancy Bowden, Mayor Protim, and the city of Leavenworth, Kansas, your flag proclaimed the month of July 2025 as Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in honor of Darius Jamal Williams.
I just want to say thank you for this, and it means a lot to me. It's friends and family for business when we're alive. Appreciate it.
Okay. Onto old business, minutes from the June twenty, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five previous meeting. Regular meeting, sorry.
Madam Protim, I'm going to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
Aye. It's been approved. New business, public comment. Public comment is limited, limited to three minutes per speaker. In the interest of time, we ask that groups willing to speak limit their public comment to one presenter. This is an opportunity for the City Commission to hear the thoughts of the public prior to conducting official city business. The mayor, City Commission, and city staff have been asked not to respond to those giving public comment, and action may not be taken by the Commission on public comment items. The mayor may direct staff to follow up with specific individuals after the meeting. When speaking, please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the Commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Sarah, do we have anyone?
We do. We have one, Mr. William Rogers.
William Rogers, 73 years, CCK, Commission, I want to thank you for giving me this time. Tonight, what I'm going to speak about, Leavenworth's known to be a military and a prison town. I'm sure you've got a lot of other good things that people just don't think in the forefront. But I want to talk about, what I talk about tonight, if there are veterans, support veterans, military, public safety supporter, you should be outraged when I talk to you about this. This is a picture of Ms. Levering. She served in the United States Army 2000 to 2007. Her MOS was 96H, combat station operator. This is a picture of her deployed to Iraq in 2003. She served this country, she served it well, and she served it proud. And I want to say that she came home from seven years of military unscathed. Now, in 2020, 2020, I'm sorry, she was recruited by a third party to go to work for CoreCivic. She went to work in April 2020. In February of 2020, less than 10 months, this is a picture of Ms. Levering. And I want to tell you how CoreCivic treated this veteran. They came in to her room when she was in intensive care unit. This day, after nearly being killed, stabbed, and beaten to near death, CoreCivic came into her room, and they gave her a document. And that document said, they told her, she asked one of them before, they said, "Well, you can either sign this and have CoreCivic pay for your medical bills or pay for them yourself." Of course, she was going to sign it, right? She didn't know what was going on. So she signed that, and I don't understand laws or how they work, and she can explain it different. She did give me permission to speak about this tonight. She lost her right to sue by doing this. And her medical ate up, and, and her time off ate it up. She's now disabled, will never be able to work again. I spoke to her about a month ago. They closed her claim out. You know how much money CoreCivic gave her? How much cash settlement to get her started back up? They gave her zero. But they can go to VFW and give them $10,000 for a PR stunt. Or the Salvation Army here in town can give them $10,000 for a PR stunt. But they can't give Ms. Levering a dollar. A dollar. She told me she's broke. She had no money to buy groceries that week, and she didn't know how she was going to pay her rent. She's now signing up for public assistance for a living, and she says she's very embarrassed. I would ask that all people in Leavenworth and across the country be outraged by this and stand up and contact CoreCivic for Ms. Levering. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, we move on to general items. Leavenworth County Port Authority. So we have Greg Cause and David Schrader with us today.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for giving us a few minutes here to give you a heads up on a campaign that we're getting ready to start. First of all, I'd like to introduce David Schrader. David is the co-chair for Leavenworth County Port Authority. We also have Lisa Hack, who is the executive director for Leavenworth County Development Corporation. And we have Doug Schumke, who is the current chairman for Leavenworth County Port Authority. David and I are the two appointees that the city of Leavenworth has appointed for the Port Authority. So we represent, I represent the whole county, the way I feel, but we've been appointed by the city of Leavenworth. So what I want to just give you a very quick briefing on is the Port Authority and LCDC, LCDC, Leavenworth County Development Corporation, we're getting ready to start an educational campaign. And we wanted to give you guys a heads up of what you may be hearing, what you may be seeing, because if somebody comes to you and says, "Hey, what is this?", we want you at least to have an idea of what's going on and why we're doing it. In the past, we've been very busy trying to get businesses into Leavenworth County, trying to, you know, do what we're supposed to do. We've not done a very good job of educating elected officials and the public of what we do. So we feel like in order to continue to receive funding from public funds, the public needs to have a better understanding of what we do. So a lot of times, we operate under NDA, non-disclosure agreements. Most businesses don't want their business made public until the deal's closed. So hence the name for all the funny names of Project Hope or Project whatever. That's to keep confidentiality. We feel like if we have a better education for everybody, we would have a better funding stream for, for the projects that we need to do. I want to state right now that the city of Leavenworth has been rock solid in their support of economic development, and we're very appreciative of that. Not all of the government agencies within Leavenworth County have been as supportive. And a lot of times, we end up having to go back and fight or fight for our money. City of Leavenworth, I think they understand the value of economic development and what it will do, and we've not had to so-called fight for, fight for our funding. Right now, industrial parks, they used to be 40 acres, 80 acres. We're seeing most industrial parks now are more in the 300 to 500 acre range, big parks. A lot of these in the Midwest are going to data centers. And not saying we're going to get a data center in Leavenworth County, but data centers are very expensive, but they need a lot of ground. Midwest has a lot of ground. They need a lot of power. We have a lot of power, and normally they need water for cooling. And we have a very good source for, for cooling. So the Midwest is very attractive for data centers. So you're seeing a lot of those pop up, and I'll touch on that here in a little bit. But the campaign is going to focus on three areas. I'm not going to read this, but you can read it at your leisure. Just hit some of the high points. The value of economic development, transparency and accountability, and building trust and support. There is two steps that we've looked at. The first step is a polling campaign that was done in February of this year. And we've contracted with Golden Shovel, in case I didn't mention that, I don't think I did. But Golden Shovel went out and did some polling. They talked to some key leaders, talked to some elected officials, did some digital surveys to try to get a feel of where the public is for economic development right now. Step two, which we'll go into, is the education campaign. The survey studies, kind of what they found out was that 78% generally supported new economic development, which sounds great. But less than 50% want to pay for it. And I know you guys see that, you know, "I want services, but I don't want to pay anything for them. I want, I want you to provide them for me at no cost." And that's kind of what people say about economic development. They understand that good-paying jobs are good for the community. They understand that businesses pay taxes, but they don't want to spend any money to make money. So kind of the single thing we kept hearing, or Golden Shovel kept hearing, is taxes. Lower my taxes, lower my taxes, don't raise my taxes. Same thing I think you guys have been hearing too. So not a big surprise there. So we're going to try to do some educating to try to let the public know what we do. There's about six different parts to this. We're going to strengthen community engagement. So we want to engage people in economic development so that they know what we're doing. We want to address tax concerns, to communicate economic benefits. Why should you spend money on economic development? How does that help me? We're going to tailor marketing messages for different audiences. So the message we send to somebody that lives in Easton, Kansas, is going to be different than the message we send to somebody that lives in Tonganoxie, Kansas, or Lansing, or the city of Leavenworth. Or if you live in Linwood, "How does economic development help me?" So we're going to try to direct our message towards people where they live and what they can relate to. We're going to combat negative perceptions, social media criticism. Social media criticism, that'll be a challenge, as you all well know. Facebook is very wild, and people can say whatever they want. Highlight strategic business attraction efforts, and then demonstrate efforts to improve infrastructure and transportation access. Which, as you know, I'm very near to my heart transportation, that I think we need to have good transportation in order to bring businesses in. They can't get to interstates and get in and out, they're going to go somewhere else. So the timeline, we started the survey in February. Over the last couple of months, we've been developing a press release and frequently asked questions. At this point, I wanted to sit down and talk to all of the cities, Leavenworth, Lansing, Baser, Tonganoxie, and Leavenworth County. And at least let you guys know what we're doing, what we're getting ready to do, to where when you hear about it, you know. So the press release will probably come out in a couple of weeks, and we'll make sure you get a copy done, to where all of the elected officials know what's going on before they read about it in the paper. This campaign's going to go on probably for another six to nine months. And it just kind of depends on how things go. It's going to be very fluid. We'll probably make changes as we see reaction, how people react to everything. We want to be able to, to react to that. This last chart, or this next chart, kind of shows the funding to the Port Authority and LCDC. This is funding just from the county. The county has cut our funding significantly. We used to receive just under $300,000 a year from them. This year, we're expecting to receive somewhere between $25,000 to $75,000. So I go back to a steady stream of funding. We need a steady stream to where if we want to try to do this 300 to 500 acre business park somewhere, the cost of that, just rough numbers, 25 to 30 million. And that's a developed park with streets and utilities. And it's a very, very rough number, because it depends on where it's at, how close you are to the utilities, how close you are to transportation, things like that. But kind of give you an idea of the amount we're talking. So obviously, to do something like that, there's going to have to be money that's going to have to be borrowed, or bonds sold, or some form of financing. In order to do any type of financing, we've got to have a steady stream of income. Or no one's going to want to loan us any money, obviously. So we also need this financing or this funding for staff too. Right now, we have a staff of three people, very, very skeleton staff. If you look at what Wyandotte County, Fort KC, any of the others have, they have staffs of 10 to 20 people. So we're running very, very lean on our staff. We could obviously use a lot more paid staff. So there will be a press release coming out. There's a copy of it in your packet. We have gone through and tried to list what we feel would be frequently asked questions. I printed those all out for you. If you come up with others that you think people will ask, please submit them to Lisa, or to me, or whoever. We want to be prepared for the questions. We want to have good answers for them. So we're trying to anticipate what people are gonna, what they're gonna, what they're gonna ask. This next slide kind of just shows some of the graphics that we initially came up with that could be on social media, or could be in some print form. In addition to that, we'll plan on having some public meetings where people can come and ask questions and address us, and hopefully get their questions answered. There's still some updates we need to do. Our website needs to be updated some, because some of this is going to point to our website. So we've still got some work to do too, before this thing fully rolls out. But you're going to see a lot of, we're going to see a lot of changes. So I guess just some final thoughts. Right now, the property tax split is about 90% residential, 10% commercial, industrial, and other things. We would like to see that get down to closer to 70 to 30. We want to see more funding from the commercial and industrial. So instead of you guys sitting here having to cut your budget, or cut programs, or whatever, my hope is to bring you more income. And I want that income to come from new businesses, not from existing businesses, not from existing residential houses. So we want to increase your income so you don't have to cut your costs. You guys do a great job with it, but at some point, you can't cut anymore without cutting services. You've got to cut policemen, you've got to cut firemen, you've got to cut streets, you've got to do something. I think one of the important things we need to understand and try to get across to people too is that, and I want to use Hills Pet Farm as an example. That tax, part of it was abated for 10 years, part of it they are currently paying now. But if that were not abated, and in 10 years, that is assessed in the $100 million range. So if I just take that $100 million and look at my county tax, that will lower my county tax, where I live in the city of Leavenworth, it'll lower it almost a mil. My hope is to bring something that is not $100 million, not a billion. I want to bring something that is a $5 billion development to Leavenworth County. If we can do that, we can eliminate the Leavenworth County property tax. Plus, whatever city it's in, I mean, I'm not even taking into account what the city tax is, or what the school tax is, but that would be lowered. So you can see how even if the city of Leavenworth does something, it's going to benefit somebody that lives in Linwood. It benefits somebody that lives in Easton that may not understand, you know, exactly how the taxes all work. But right now, and this is kind of based off of conversation I've had with Bob Weber, with the county, but every $120 million in business or industrial investment will lower the mill rate by one mil. So the county's mill rate's 35, 36, somewhere in that range, I believe. So if we brought something in that was 3.5, 3.6 billion, in theory, that would wipe out the county's mill rate. Tonganoxie, once Hills comes online, Tonganoxi, or Hills is going to fund, what's the percentage?
3 million in property taxes each year.
3 million in property taxes? So a substantial funding for the city of Tonganoxie. We're going to experience a lot of growth in Leavenworth County, and it's growing right around us. The end of May, I'm sure you heard Unified Government announced a proposal to establish a 550 acre business park for a data center that's estimated at $12.6 billion. Last week, Fort KC, which is the port authority for Kansas City, is looking at incentives for a $100 billion data center. It's going to be on 379 acres, just north of KCI, at the Hunt Industrial Park, Midwest Industrial Park. You know, you look at what the Royals are doing, what the Chiefs are doing. If some of those were to move to the Legends, what's that going to do to Leavenworth? You know, we've got to see some development off of it with the development around us. And that development is going to tend to go west, it's going to go the path of least resistance. Leavenworth County has a lot of ground, a lot of large ground. So we're going to see it coming, and we need to try to get the right development, what we want, and what makes sense for Leavenworth County, or for whatever city it's going to be adjacent to. Economic development takes time. You know, these deals, these data centers, you know, before you actually saw something, you're probably five years, five to six years away at least. Once you get through all the paperwork to do it, by the time you order Transformers, Transformers are probably about three years out now for the electrical. So it takes a long time to get stuff online. They always taught me in business, sometimes you've got to spend money to make money. Well, that's kind of what economic development is. Sometimes you've got to spend money to make money. So I guess at this point, what we're asking is, one, we want you to know what's going on, what we're trying to accomplish, and then also, we would ask for your support in accomplishing this, and when people ask questions. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer questions. If I can't answer them, I've got three more people back here that can back me up. If they can't answer them, we'll get you answers.
I got a couple, but let you guys go first. Question? Question?
About the presentation, you're lowering our property taxes, I appreciate that.
I pay as much as anybody does, so I want to know what you're doing.
I appreciate it.
You're out down the corner from me, so.
Well, um.
I know what you're paying.
I'll look for information.
Not to bash the county or anything, but you know, it used to be the commissioners knew that if you had development anywhere in the county, it lifted the boat for everybody. And that's the truth. I mean, what's going on at Hills is going to affect us. What goes on anywhere in our county affects us too. So I think, I think it's ridiculous that they have gone down so far on, on their support, and why they don't, why don't they don't support, support it. And a question I have is on transportation. I know this has been an issue for a long time, seven highway with all the stoplights and everything. What is happening with that?
Currently, KDOT has what they call consult meetings. And basically, KDOT works through a series of projects. Every two years, they refill that pipeline. They had a consult meeting about a year and a half ago. We proposed four projects. We got one of them on, which is Highway 5. So that is in the study phase right now, and that will be somewhere from K-7 to 435. I can't tell you if it's going to be down McIntyre, or if it's going to be over the existing Highway 5. Greg's personal opinion is Greg would like to see it down McIntyre and extend west of K-7.
That makes more sense, I think.
And eventually tie into a north-south road that would tie into the Turnpike. And that road would hopefully go west to Leavenworth and would tie into 73 Highway. That's Greg's idea. I don't know if I'll ever see this in my lifetime. Highway 5, you will see Highway 5. We had a conversation with the Senate President about two months ago. He came up to Leavenworth and met with some business leaders, and we presented that project to him, and he said, "Well, how far is it?" And I pulled it up on Google, and it was like, five miles. He says, "Five miles? Is that what we're talking about? Really?" He says, "We ought to be able to make that happen." So I think we've got that support. We're going to try to get Secretary Reed up here and get him in the community to take a look at what we've got and actually see what we've got. But right now, Highway 5 is scheduled for construction probably '31, 2031 in that timeframe.
Well, and it's so windy, too.
Right.
I'm thinking of, you know, the most direct route. I remember looking at all the different plans, and it did seem like the most direct route was McIntyre.
It is.
But it seemed like it would be the least expensive and the most easiest to obtain, too.
Yeah. So I think that's going to happen, it's going to take some time. Now, I talked about the consult meetings. We're getting ready to have those again this fall. And so we need to get some projects of what's important to all the cities and the county, which we've done the regional transportation study, which kind of shows that. But when it comes time to do it, it's a very, very political process. And when I say political, basically, they put everybody in a room down at the Sherden at Lenexa. And you break into little groups, and you start saying, "Okay, what project do you want?" And you've got to raise your hand, "Oh, I want this project." And so they go through, and they actually start taking tally, ticker marks of the votes on them. So then KDOT takes all this information, they go into a secret room, and they mull it over, and then about two or three months later, they come out with the projects that are going to fill their pipeline. But the more people you have, the louder your voice is, and the better chance that you're going to get your project. And we've seen this, there were a bunch of people on, that were supporting a project on 75 Highway, north of Topeka, and there've been some fatalities there. And I mean, they had all the mothers, the mad mothers and the people that have lost somebody, and they were all talking, and they were all voting, and that project, it didn't get put on there. So.
So that means we all got to show up down there so we can put our tick marks up, or what?
Yep, that's what it means.
Well, I know they send out surveys, too, right?
They do send out surveys, and they do meetings throughout the state. Normally, they do, they're going to do one in Topeka, they'll do one in Lenexa, they'll do somewhere probably down around Wichita, and they'll do someone out west. Then they'll do an online one, too, where you can do it online. So the last one, we did, we attended Manhattan, we attended Lenexa, and we attended online. And basically, we just kept saying the same thing. So we got one, which for us, I was happy we got something, at least. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah. Any comments, Scott, or questions from you?
Penny texted me and stated that city staff did attend last year, so I'd assume we will attend those this year as well.
Sounds like a plan.
You know, I, we did something like this in my time in the obnoster, and something that we always found worked was horse trading with other counties ahead of time, saying, "Hey, if you support us, we'll support you." So certainly would encourage that ahead of time. The only other thing I would caution on these final thoughts, to my knowledge, there is no mechanism by which industrial development would automatically lower the county mil rate. So I get the idea there that you could, in theory, lower the mil rate through the county. I would be careful saying that, "Hey, you built a $1 billion facility, the county's automatically going to knock that down."
Right, because there are other things, other things involved in that, too. That makes sense.
So I would, I would add a "could" there or something. But just in case you're spreading that message out there. But otherwise, I certainly agree with the.
I'm not selling a county, though.
You may want to.
Tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock.
I would, at the same time, though, I certainly agree with the philosophy that rising tide lifts all boats, and that we, we're not just, we're not just trying to make the city of Leavenworth better, but we want to be good partners and assist with the county's growth as well.
Well, it helps all of our taxes, too, when you have more people and houses and other things, too, and.
Hey, I'd like to add something.
Do you want, either come to the mic or something, so we can hear you at home, too?
Doug Champion, the current chair of the Port Authority, which we have other members here. I don't know whether you guys were aware, but a little over a year ago, Senator Marshall came in town to visit with us at the LCDC. In fact, we had a couple of customers upset that weren't invited, they weren't asked to come. So we spent an hour with him, and one of the things we did ask for was a little help. We don't get a shot at a U.S. Senator very often. But I'm reminded of a time when I was much younger, when we got this fancy rope between here and Asherson, simply because Bob Dole was leaving office, and so we were dancing and casting.
Right, I remember that.
And their colleagues in the Senate gave them the money. So we had a great rope up there, best one in the county, I believe. But I wanted to remind Senator Marshall we need some help going north-south. There's a lot of push east-west, there was some natural, and I'll wind up with everything's taken off. So we take our shots, and we give them. So it was kind of an honor to thank Senator Marshall.
That's great.
For our connections with our staff that came in to visit with us. So we got our shots in, like, giving them north-south rope from the pedal go.
Thank you.
We take every shot we possibly.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I might add, too, that Baser is working with KTA and doing a study for an interchange in the 158, 166, 172nd area to put an interchange on I-70.
Oh, good.
So anything in that, I-70 has to be done by KTA. But Baser is putting money into that to do that study. I think it's about a $75,000 study, and I believe they're funding maybe half of it.
Yeah, something like that.
With KTA. So that's kind of the first step, too, of that north-south, we get that interchange in there.
That would be good.
And then hopefully, too, you know, maybe it goes south, or we do something south from Tongonoxie towards the DeSoto Sunflower area, too.
Yeah, DeSoto, yes.
And to echo something Greg mentioned earlier, something that Penny and I are continuing to hear from metro and local and regional people that are in charge of economic development, the Kansas Chamber of Commerce, KC Smartport, the Kansas City metro area is running out of development space, not including Leavenworth. And so eventually, and so to Greg's point is, it will eventually move out here because there's just no room left in Kansas City to build. So I think, I agree with him, it is a matter of time. So it is, it's good to be prepared.
Well, I have to say, I appreciate you guys, your volunteers, your volunteers for this, and we do appreciate the work you have done and that you're doing for the Port Authority and for LCDC. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anything else?
If you've got anything.
Are we good?
No, no, just, yeah, just got a lot of thoughts right now, you know, we talked and everything like that, so I know we'll have more questions later on, but, yeah.
Feel free to call me or anyone, Ed or.
Thank you.
Jermaine? Feel free to call us anytime. We're here to serve you guys, you appointed us, and you can call David, you can call me, you know where we live.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, resolutions. Resolution B 2400, providing for a notice of public hearing on exceeding the revenue-neutral rate.
So real quick, before we vote on, or you all vote on this, excuse me, just to clarify what this is and what it is not, this is just setting the date for the public hearing, notifying of the city's intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. If you, so voting for this resolution leaves all options on the table for the city commission. So you can still, in the future, choose to go revenue-neutral, you can still, in the future, choose to lower, increase the mil rate, however you want to do it. Voting no on this resolution locks the city into one and only one choice, and that is revenue-neutral. So I would highly encourage, you know, we haven't had our all-day budget meeting yet, even if you are not in favor of the proposed budget that the city staff provided to you, the option to go back to that or to make changes still exists by approving this resolution.
Okay. That's good to know.
Just to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Are there any questions on that?
No, I've read through the whole thing. I perfectly understand them.
Well, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number B 2400.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, the VA-Leavenworth Campus Agreement Review and Discussion.
Senator Rotam and Commission, before the city commission this evening to discuss with you and to review and discuss the current agreement that we have with an organization known as the Pioneer Group. So to frame the conversation, I'm going to sort of start and tell you what the status we are currently at, give a little historical context, since this contract has been in existence for 20 years, and then outline some possible paths forward that you will need to make some decisions on. We're going to have to do something because the contract requires us to do that. So let me start at the beginning, if I could. Way back in September 15th of 2005, 20 years or a little more, not quite 20 years ago, the city of Leavenworth entered into an agreement with the Eisenhower Ridge Association. That name has now been changed to the Pioneer Group. So when you see those two, they're interchangeable. It was the Eisenhower Ridge Group, now it's the Pioneer Group, okay? That agreement outlines the provisions for the city of Leavenworth to provide police service for portions of the VA campus and fire service for the entire VA campus. Our agreement was born out of another agreement. The VA and the then Eisenhower Ridge Association, but now Pioneer Group, each 99-year development lease, there are a number of old buildings on the VA campus that were leased to the Pioneer Group so that they could restore those buildings and make them available to people to rent. I recall back 20 years ago during the discussions, the theory that was planned was for those to be principally available to veterans so that they could have the ability to live on the campus and services available, such as the hospital and all of the other services. So that was the theory. I don't think that's currently in existence today. Some of the people that live in the buildings up there are private citizens that are Leavenworth residents, okay? So that's sort of how it is that we got here today. The fire department responds to the entire VA campus because at some point around this same time, the VA made the decision to disband the fire department. They do not have a functioning fire department up there. Since they're in the city of Leavenworth, our fire department responds up there. As part of the agreement, the city of Leavenworth and the Pioneer Group worked out an arrangement by which the police department would respond to portions of the VA campus. We would be the initial responding agency to just portions of the VA campus, and the VA police department would handle everything else that's up there. So I had a map made. Our dear friend Mitch in GIS made this map for us. So that is the map of the VA campus. The buildings that are identified in police blue are the ones that the Leavenworth Police Department is principally responsible for. Everything else up there, such as the hospital and all of the other buildings, are the responsibility of the VA Police Department. So if an event takes place, whatever it is, a disturbance or something like that, if it's blue, it's supposed to be the police department, if it's whatever that color is, salmon, whatever Mitch came up with, it's the VA Police Department, okay? So I'm going to talk about the complexities and difficulties of that. Yeah, sir?
Before you go on, Chief, can you tell me, is, the ones that you would be responding to, are those mostly residential, while the others are mostly business or hospital or stuff like that?
That's a fair assessment. Yeah, that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
Okay. So the city of Leavenworth collectively have had some difficulties with this agreement. I want to principally talk about the police department, okay? Let me start the conversation, this day. 250 years ago in the United States, when we started law enforcement, very simply put, it's about jurisdiction, okay? Whoever's jurisdiction is, is who is supposed to go first. That's what we decided, and that's what we've been doing. So what we have here is an agreement that commingles that, where certain parts of the jurisdiction are us and certain parts of the jurisdiction belong to the VA Police Department. I will tell you that that has created some complicated issues over the years and some difficulties. I'll give you some examples of that. I'm not casting aspersions on the VA, but it's just like any other federal institution where there's a lot of change, right? There's new people that come into the VA, every few years, there's a new chief of police, and so there's a steep learning curve when they see this agreement. And so we've had new chiefs come in to the VA Police Department and say things like this. "I understand that this agreement exists, however, this entire piece of property is federal property, and so we need to be included in that." So they wanted us, for example, to, at various times, stop by the VA Police Department. We would get a call for service up there, stop by the VA Police Department and sort of check in with the VA Police Department and then go. It took us a while to work through that. That was a long ordeal. We, quite frankly, we fought about that. That is not reasonable, that is not efficient, and that's not effective. We've had new chiefs come in and say, "Okay, if we're not going to do that, at the very least, if you get a 911 call on the VA campus wherever it is, we would like your dispatchers to call us and let us know that you're going up on the VA campus." Again, we, you know, that's very, very inefficient, we can't do that, we don't have time to do that, the dispatchers are talking to people regarding information. We've had them go listen to the scanner and go there, to the call, as we were being dispatched and being sent to the call. On the surface, it sounds minor or something that we could work out by just some supervisory discussions or some leadership. We were not able to do that. It has been chronically a problem of difficulty of interpretation of response, and my concern has always been inefficiency. The chief and I, he is not the chief there, he's transferred out last year, had a really, really terse exchange last year. There was a traffic accident in the parking lot of the hospital. It is as clear as day, in the agreement, the VA Police Department is responsible for the hospital. They would not do it. We tried for 45 minutes to an hour to convince, I finally just ordered my traffic people to go out there and work the accident, and so we did that. That's not the way that it's supposed to be. So what's happening is, it's not as efficient as it could be, and it's been difficult, okay? So that's the police department portion of it. The city of Leavenworth, I think because of principally age and some change within the Pioneer Group, has had difficulty over the last four or five years getting payment. At times, they've been, I think, as much as a year late on paying. I'll talk about the budget piece in just a second, but the Pioneer Group pays the city of Leavenworth in lieu of taxes. But I'm going to talk about that. We've had difficulty getting them to submit payment on time, the Pioneer Group. And so when I was interim city manager, I wrote a letter, I think Mr. Kramer wrote letters, "Hey, you're behind, can you submit payment?" And so we've worked through that. I think today, they're caught up, but we've had difficulties with that. We've had difficulties with trying to solve what we would describe as normal, common problems. We're having issues with squatters living in some of the vacant apartments out there. So can we have you put in some cameras? That was always difficult, just to sort of get those conversations, get those meetings. We would think we'd have solutions. And so my broadest point to you is, the current structure that we have in the agreement is just not working very well. So as we come upon the time that the agreement calls for us to renew it, which is what part of the discussion is, I'd like to sort of outline some paths forward for us to discuss as options, and I think it's time for that to change. So let's talk about that. I mentioned just a second ago that as part of this agreement, the, in lieu of property taxes, which would normally support police and fire services, there's an agreement outlined that's pretty complicated about how they calculated that. You can try and sort through that if you like, but here's, here's essentially some numbers for you to contemplate. In 2023 and 2024, the Leavenworth Police Department responded 850 times to the campus, which is essentially about once every 24 hours, a little more than that, every 24 hours for two years straight.
You said 850?
850.
Okay.
Okay? The fire department responded out there around 250 times in '23 and '24. The amount of money that the city of Leavenworth got in '23 was $18,908 and $19,190. So essentially, about $19,000 a year is what the Pioneer Group. So essentially about nineteen thousand dollars a year is what the Pioneer Group is paying the city of Leavenworth for police and fire services. I think not my responsibility to judge whether that's a lot or a little bit, but those are the numbers. So you get some sense about how much time we're spending out there versus what they are paying to support those police services. And so that's my best effort to try and gauge where we are. And the purpose of the meeting is that, or the primary purpose is that the agreement is set to be renewed on September fifteenth. It called for a twenty-year period, which was expired in two thousand and twenty-five in a few months. And then if we agreed, it would be a new set of five-year agreements every five years. And so that sort of gives you a sense of where we are tonight and sort of some paths forward that I'm gonna try and lay out some recommendations for you. We have, we have to do something. The other piece of this is that, I'll share a little bit of information about the Pioneer Group. Because I understand that the original architect from way back twenty years ago, he's passed away. His wife is elderly. I think she's in her early nineties. They are working through selling the property that they, selling the lease that they have to a new developer, which I outlined in the policy report. Not sure that that's gonna be done until later this fall. But they are working on selling that. And I think that's sort of been part of the reason why payments have been delayed and they just sort of aged out and are ready to move on to some different phase. And so they're selling the group, the Pioneer Group is selling to a different developer. So at the very least, one of the things that we're gonna be required to do is create a new agreement with the VA. I'm sorry, with the new developer who is buying the property. If we are going to continue to provide police services for the campus. They don't have a fire department, so I feel like we are compelled, the fire department, not only speak, like Chief Burci, here, I won't speak for him, but I feel like they don't have a fire department. We're gonna have to respond. The fire department's gonna have to respond to the VA to handle that. I am recommending and advocating that moving forward, we withdraw the Leavenworth Police Department from the initial responding agency to the VA campus and turn those services back over to the VA Police Department. They have a fully functioning police department out there that's capable of responding and dealing with things. And it would be a much more normal architecture for us, which is that if they go out to a call and they need our help, we will come help them. Just like we have with the Leavenworth Sheriff's Department, Leavenworth County Sheriff's Department, or the Highway Patrol helps us. It would be, that would be the architecture that we would do. And I would think that would be a much more normal circumstance that we're used to and it'd be advocating for us to do that, that even if we move forward with the agreement that we turn it back to a normal circumstance, which is that they respond and then we come help them. And then I think we all have to have a question asked and answered and debated as to whether or not the funding mechanism is appropriate. You know, we have a lot of information about how many times we go out there and the officers in the fire department as to whether or not that formula moving forward perhaps needs to be recalculated to a more modern, because I think it was calculated twenty years ago.
Jesus, yeah, no kidding.
That's my presentation for you this evening. You probably have a lot of questions. I was trying not to make it too terribly complicated. It is, um, I think Mr. Bowder, not really the only ones that were around back then when this started.
Yeah.
Mr. Hingula was alive, but.
Oh, God.
So, um, that's where we are tonight. I'll be glad to answer whatever questions I have. But that's sort of, um, the reason why we're here now is that gives us a couple of months of time to sort of get your questions answered, answer if you needed more information, different information. Just wanted to broach the topic with you and start tonight.
That's two thousand and five?
What's that?
That was two thousand and five?
Two thousand and five.
I was here and I lived here.
Okay. I said alive, sir.
Yeah, I, I didn't know what went on out there at the VA though.
Right.
Go ahead, questions?
Uh, yeah, so do you think with us accepting funding from the Pioneer Group, does that, um, put us in a box? You know what I mean? Do you feel like we, we have to respond with us accepting this funding?
Yes, the answer to that question, I think so.
So if you think if we release it and we just support them as needed, do you think, like, do you think we should not accept the funding? That's the question that I'm asking.
Go ahead. I'll try to answer this question. I mean, you have, generally you have a contract right now that's set to expire and it's in exchange for Leavenworth providing services, they pay you for those services. Once, if Leavenworth stops providing services, then there would be no payment for those services. You know, we're not, you know, tonight, I think, if I can paraphrase for Steph, we're looking probably for some direction where to go, not all the nuts and bolts of things. You know, a question would be, a big difference, I think, is whether we do or continue an agreement versus renewing this agreement, which I would not recommend at all. It's a forty drafted agreement. It doesn't serve.
No.
So those could be two different questions. Or one threshold question is maybe if we want to just get out the whole deal completely. Or if we do want to maybe continue, you know, direct chief and I and Scott to, to work through something and bring something back to the commission board's consideration. But we would not recommend continuing this agreement as it is right now.
Totally.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring them back.
And I'm already, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so several questions. First of all, I appreciate, Chief, that what you pointed out about them not having a fire department and, you know, it kind of puts them kind of in a bind. Can you tell me right now, so the Pioneer Group is paying the nineteen thousand a year or eventually paying nineteen thousand a year for all the services, right? Is there any source for federal funding? I mean, it's, it's, like, what is that? Have we been engaged on the federal level? Do you know in the past?
So the Pioneer Group is a private entity.
Sure, sure.
And so to the extent that they may or may not have gotten federal funds to help with the project, I, I believe way back when, they probably got some federal funding to assist because of the historic nature of those buildings out there. They were really, really in disrepair. And so I'm betting that's what happened, is they got some federal assistance or some historic tax credits or some form of assistance to help them get the project started. But that's just off the top of my head. We need to do some research to find out.
And, Mr. Warren, were you asking federal funding for the buildings or federal funding for the emergency services?
Yeah, for the emergency services, yeah.
So, I mean, so the VA Police Department are federal employees, so that is federally funded.
They provided all that before.
But this is just kind of like a caper, like, oh, hey, thanks for your help and we'll pay you this much or whatever for your support, right?
I, I think it's. Something like that. There's, in the contract, there's some pretty complex formula that outlines how it's calculated.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, go ahead.
The way the trend, the way it worked is that, and I'm good at not using all the big terminology, but the VA was authorized, so it's RFP, to try to find a developer to transition these buildings into living. You know, I think the cookie for the developers was they got buildings that, you know, needed a little bit of rehab and stuff, that at least infrastructure was in place, the buildings were there. So with modest investments, they could convert them, create, sell, own, rent them, make money. You know, that was kind of the cookie of them, opportunity for them to make some money on that. But the contract document specified that as part of the VA's RFP requirements was that the developer had to negotiate with someone other than the VA to provide the fire and the police.
Okay.
And so hence, that was the agreement that was reached at that time. Now, in terms of that lease, I don't even know, we don't, I haven't seen a copy of the base lease. For example, how long of a lease do this Pioneer or whoever have with the VA? When does their arrangement run, best run out? I don't have the answer to that.
So I think it's a ninety-nine year lease, off the top of my head. But, but I think the key point is that the agreement the city of Leavenworth has is with the Pioneer Group, right?
No, I just wanted to make sure. Can you tell me, Chief, just, you have like a rough cost to serve calculation every time you guys are called out for a random call? I know it's like all over the place. You might have one officer, you might have three or more. But general cost, you know, for making a call?
I'm betting you it's more than nineteen thousand dollars.
Well, it is my point, right, right. So, I mean.
I mean, that's not enough for just the fire department, let alone those.
No, not at all.
Let's just use this as an example. If it were a domestic violence call, which we have frequently, you're talking about two hours, two officers for probably forty-five minutes to an hour before they're able to, you know, respond, handle the matter, arrest, that sort of thing. And so we've done, we've done that work. We have that work. That, we could show you all of that, how many calls we've been, how many officers, how long they were there. We've done all that work.
Right.
It was, the question for tonight is sort of, uh, I think, like Mr. Waters said, let's have the conversation, get some sense from where you, what guys are on this, and then we can delve a lot deeper into that.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, I can tell you guys already, I mean, I definitely support you not having to make those calls if they're perfectly capable of handling all the police calls going forward. I mean, you, you need probably almost triple what you're getting just to make it, you know, break even for you guys. And, and even then, I mean, it's over a, it's over a visit a day right now, so.
And I agree with that. But I want to reiterate my position is that I, I would prefer that they respond initially.
That, that's, that's what I mean. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Chief Birch, how do you feel about the fire department side?
When I first came here, there was an agreement between, with the fire department and the VA. They used to have their own federal fire, fire employees, fire department. And when I got here, we was, it was five-year contracts that renewed. And we was, we come up, was coming up on the end of the ten-year, so we were gonna negotiate another five years. At that time, we were, we were getting about four hundred thousand dollars, four and fifty thousand dollars from the VA for the fire department. And they came to us and said that they didn't want to continue going forward. They said they would negotiate and do another five, but at the end of the five, they wanted to stop because they felt like the VA can't city Topeka, it's in the city, the city responds to it. So we was unsuccessful in getting an agreement, so they just, they cut us off, boom. And so we still respond out there. This Pioneer Group's a little bit different in the fact that we run out there a lot and it's, it's in terrible condition. Not, no codes really. We'll have a lot of false alarms and stuff. It just, it's, it's a mess out there.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, thank you for that. I guess, David, I'd be a proponent of definitely a new agreement if we're gonna do it again.
It's an interesting question because, you know, what do you do? You know, for example, you know, any church building in the city of Leavenworth gets police and fire, but they don't pay property taxes or anything, you know, or any other not, you know, tax exempt use. So that's always a, a trigger, you know, as, you know, the responsibility versus providing the services and whether you get paid for the services. But certainly both of these departments provide services to entities that do not technically pay for those services. You know, it's an interesting, it's an interesting question, but I.
But it's still, but it's still based on a, an agreement though. There's a foundation for agreement.
I mean, for example, no, I mean, I mean, I, you know, just think of all the churches around here.
That have burned, yeah.
No, no, I'm just saying, in this case, this is a private agreement.
It's a little bit different, but, you know, from, I'm starting, I'm starting at a broader perspective of, you know, there's also the, you know, I, I mean, I don't think anybody here is interested in, you know, letting buildings burn or having crime occur in places either. And, but it's not a situation where everybody that benefits from police and fire services always pay for them. This is the case where there is, but we're, but we're not, certainly. I don't think the, the money aspect is probably the biggest, it is, it is a important part, but it's probably not the biggest part of this. It's probably the inefficiencies.
Inefficiency, yeah.
The issue of services, but certainly the dollar aspect is only something to look at. But this agreement is just, it's, it's old, it's forty written.
Sure.
We need to clarify in whatever agreement we come to, a lot of different things.
If there's an agreement.
There's a lot of, a lot of room in here for interpretations and, you know, handshake agreements, which I don't generally like.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and definitely too, the whole, you know, piece, there's gotta be some type of, if there is a new agreement, like you said, Nancy, and we gotta address the, uh, the slow pay portion as well. There's gotta be triggers on that that encourage that not happening because they're technically not even paying nineteen thousand a year then. So what are they paying at? What's their? Like, how, how fast are they paying? Like, is it just an annual fee or is it?
About a year behind at one point. Or at least a year behind at one point. Like I said, I think Mr. Kramer, I recall discussing with Mr. Kramer, he wrote some fairly terse letters. I wrote one, hey, could you pay up? And so I think they're caught up.
They are current.
Right.
Okay.
It was, they were delayed for a while. There's a lot of sunk costs there too that we haven't even told you about. You know, Sarah spent quite a bit of her time tracking down those payments. Our rental coordinator, Jip, is out there all the time. Our co- enforcement officers are out there all the time. Our fire inspectors are out there all the time. So, I mean, that, those are all things that we haven't calculated, but certainly are resources that we could be spending elsewhere.
Yeah, definitely not in favor of another twenty-year term on an agreement either, so.
No. Well, I, I just feel like that, well, this is, this is different than, I mean, well, it's not, it's the same, it's different. It's on federal property. You know, like Fort Leavenworth with Michael's Military Housing. You know, the, the fort provides all the police and fire to all of them. And why is not the VA providing that to anybody that's on their federal property? It, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it's, yeah.
I don't see why we.
Part of my question, yeah.
Being short-staffed and everything else, and why we are having to support that. And this is nothing. This is, this amount that they're paying is nothing.
And I don't think any of us want buildings to burn or people, you know, crime to increase or anything like that.
But still, it, it just doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem right. I.
No, but I think that's an angle we're gonna look at.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't seem right at all.
Yeah, you may have to look at the, the lease, you know? Does the lease say anything about fire and police protection being provided?
Oh, the lease for the person, for the, for the people there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, a couple of questions. Does, does the VAPD currently recognize this situation?
Yes, they do.
You've had, you've had conversations recently with them, you know, you know, you're second, you know, that contract's coming up, blah, blah, blah.
So yes, I, 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 the, the difficulty I ran into with the VA Police Department is that they were in transition. The chief, um, that they had last year rotated out. They had an interim person for some period of time. I think they have a new one now. But I have communicated to the folks at the VA, the pretty high-level guy at the VA, that we, that the contract is coming up for discussion, that the police department's positioned and we be advocating. So they're aware that we're gonna have this, that we're having this discussion. But I didn't really want to commit to anything until we got a sense to talk about it.
It's to Nancy's point, I think, I'm sorry, Nancy, if you're gonna say something up.
No, go ahead.
But is there anything we could do to, to look at, you know, center of marshals office or anything like that? I mean, to really look at on the federal side to see if any, you know, assistance or support can be brought in to, to support this, you know, federally-run facility? I mean, it's.
We would be more than happy to investigate that. I mean.
Yeah, at least just to try.
There's absolutely no way we would have some kind of a resolution by September.
Oh, no, a hundred percent not.
My thought is that they have a police department.
Right.
Why are they not responding to the whole place? I don't understand that. They, I mean, that's what they do at Fort Leavenworth. Why can't they do that at the VA? They already have a police department there.
In, you know, my, unless you guys know the answer, my theory would be that this was a private developer. They came in and wanted to redevelop these properties and the VA saw this as an opportunity to reduce some of the, their service.
And their RFP was specifically putting the burden on developers to find alternative police security services.
Maybe they could find somebody else then.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a fair point. Just because the VA's RFP or agreement with the private developer says to develop.
Maybe they need to hire their own security.
That, that agreement between the two of them is not binding on the city of Leavenworth.
Right, yeah. They could, they could hire their own security. I don't see why they couldn't do it.
At the time, I'm sure the expectation was not that we would be spending so much time and effort out there. So, I mean, the, the nature of that service has changed.
Great, to put the money in perspective.
Twenty-year agreements are probably not the best idea.
Yeah.
No.
So we're in agreement, uh, not renewing this?
Well, I'd like to know more.
Just need some, just direction from, from you.
I need to know more about what our costs are running.
You're okay with us.
I know nineteen thousand is, is nothing, but I'd like to know that.
I don't think we're looking for an actual motion or anything tonight. Just kind of wanted to put this in front of you, get some feelers from you on how you want to proceed. We're gonna take your input and continue on and you'll be, you'll be hearing back from us at some point, you know.
Well, my input is, my input is if you get out of this, let's get out of it. That's my input.
If, if we were to say, do it yourself to the VA, do they have the police department that can do the whole campus? Or do they have enough to do what they're doing in pink there?
It's a fair question. Um, they did before, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to their current status that they have now.
Actually, yeah, I can't expect you to know their personnel status. But, you know, it's, that's kind of something I think we need to consider, you know? Hey, you guys gotta, or, or consider, tell them, we're, we're going away. You gotta hire your more people, you know?
So that's why I'm here now to try and make sure that I got some sense from where we were gonna land on this and then kind of start to make those notifications and, and do those discussions.
Well, it's gonna cost Pioneer more than nineteen thousand dollars to hire their own security, I think.
Well, for sure. And I don't know, Chief, I, I would be okay with, uh, you know, maybe if we looked at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty day, you maybe short, short-term, you know, like cloud agreement just to, because this is the first time we're really having conversations of, hey, guys, look, this is, like you said, David, it's not efficient, you know, financially not viable for us and, you know, we gotta, we gotta take care of, I want to take care of our veterans a hundred percent. We gotta take care of our folks in town and it's just, it's just all gotta balance right.
But this expires in September, so we don't have much time.
Oh, well, for sure, but we can do, we could do some type of extension renewal or something like that. Yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, so, if they could do that, just to give a little bit more time, let them know what our thoughts are, concerns, yeah.
We will.
Yeah, okay.
Another question, I know that you guys got, you know, you guys call it mutual aid, I don't know if you call it that, you know, if you need help, and say Lansing comes over here and helps with a series of arrests or something, do, do you, does, do you pay them for coming and helping you?
No.
Or does somebody else pay?
No.
Okay.
We all acknowledge in the public safety profession that sometimes we just don't have enough people to handle some event that takes place in our community, and so, mutual aid was created for that very thing. If we need assistance, they can come in, and we can go help them, that happens all of the time.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It probably happens equally at the fire department, so, that's just something that we all agree to, that if we need help, we go help each other through the mutual aid, and there's no, hey.
Good.
But there is an emergency, go ahead.
Go ahead, there is an emergency.
Yeah, but if there is an emergency, then the VA officer is the first one to respond, like they can respond, they will respond, they won't wait on Leavenworth, correct?
Correct. Right, if they, so, if they return to a normal structure would be, they get called to some event out there, they respond, and they say, we need some help, can you come help us? For example, if they needed our SWAT team, or our police dog, or our drone, or something like that, and they don't have that, we'd be glad to do that, as well as the other agencies, like the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Patrol, they do that for us, that's common, that's very common, and so, yes, is the answer to that question, definitively, we can go help them. If they don't have enough people, we can go provide backup, happens once a month between us and Lansing and the Sheriff's Department.
And they would still be using the county dispatch system, so, our police department and Sheriff's Department would be aware of any call going out there anyways.
I only have one more question, and this'll be a real surprise. Roberta?
What?
Have you ever seen this formula in this contract?
Yes, sir, I'm the one that calculates it every year.
Does it make sense to you?
Um...
I mean, certainly it doesn't to me.
It has a basis in, in reality, they basically say, this, the appraised value of these properties is X, the assessed value of these properties is X, that's X percentage of the total appraised value in the, in the city, and so, you would pay this percentage of the, of the, of the police department's budget, right? So, I can see how they came up with the formula, but it's complicated, I have to call the county every year and say, okay, what's the, and then we get wildly different numbers, so I'll call the county one year and say, what are the assessed values of these properties, and I'll get one set of numbers, and the next year, they're completely different.
And you would have never recommended that they do this?
Well, no, I think, I think that we really need to look at how much time we spend out there.
Yeah.
And we've got, we have historical records, we know how much it costs.
Yeah.
I don't know how many more patrol vehicles and officers we need so that we can respond to them, but it's something, and it's certainly more than $18,000, $19,000, every time I calculate it, I sort of scoff, oop, here we go again, but, yeah, but I understand what the formula is trying to do, I don't think it's effective.
So, I think we've gotten some consensus from you all that
Yeah.
the current agreement is a no-go.
Right.
You don't, we don't want to leave our friends high and dry, but maybe to find a solution that will eventually get at least the police department out of this service while provide, allowing them to come up to full speed or something like that, does that sound reasonable to the four of you? Okay.
Chief Birch, I want to hear from you, I didn't really hear from you.
Well, I was just gonna say, with the dollars, to put it in perspective, for 10 years, we were getting average $400,000 a year.
Yes, I remember that.
Because it actually funded six new firefighters at the time.
Yeah, yeah, that's a big difference.
Big difference.
Big difference, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the claims for June 20th, 2025, through July 2nd, 2025, in the amount of $1,643,568.13, net amount for payroll number 13 effective June 27th, 2025, in the amount of $461,036.90, includes police and fire pension in the amount of $7,753.58.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please begin voting, Commissioner Hingal.
Aye.
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 All right, go around the table now.
I have two things, first, real quick, you guys probably saw the Jimmy John's venue up there, that is for the Monday All-Day Budget Meeting, if you've already ordered, then ignore it, if you haven't, then please give it a look and tell Trevor tonight, before you leave, what your order is. If you do not provide us an order, you're getting a turkey sandwich, so, if you're fine with a turkey sandwich, then just don't order anything, but just giving you the opportunity to get what you want in there. Second, on probably a more, more important note, Melissa and Trevor have gotten training from the county on their texting system, the personal or whatever calling it, Mylar or whatever it is, they, I have asked them to, and our department heads don't know this yet, but, so, tomorrow, we're going to have department heads sign up for the system, and we're going to do an internal test pilot program, we would very much like the city commissioners to participate in that and sign up for it, it will, it will give Trevor and Melissa practice in getting people signed up that would come in and need help, but also, we would very much like your feedback as we try the internal system on what you like and what you would like to see different, it would give us as staff practice to implement it, so what we will be doing essentially is it'll be among department heads and city commissioners ideally, and Trevor and Melissa will be using it as if it were a public system, so, they'll be sending out reminders, notices, you know, hey, don't forget about our barbecue, or, you know, hey, our street's closed for an emergency, whatever, and so that way, we can kind of practice it and be ready to launch, and so, would very much like you all to participate, and yes, we would be very happy to sign you up if you want to get in touch with Melissa or Trevor, and so they can get some practice signing you up, so, I just wanted to tell you all about that, we'll be working on that starting tomorrow, so...
We do that online, or do we have to come in for that?
You can do it online.
Okay.
And if you want to call, too, either one of us could probably want you there on the phone.
Okay, sounds good.
And then, hopefully, once we get all the kinks worked out in the next couple of months, we'll be ready to launch July.
Sound good.
So, cool.
All right, let's go around the table. Can you hear?
I hope everybody had a great 4th of July, I had a really good 4th of July, I really enjoyed going up to the, going up to Fort Leavenworth and laying back on the golf course and watching all those fireworks, it was tremendous, and I really appreciate the fact that although I know that there, there were fireworks going off all throughout Leavenworth, I've received a number of, a number of emails and texts and such, and I, I agree with every one of you, we should do everything we can to stop it, or, as some of you recommended, just let them come in here and, and hell them and sell them and reap the benefits of the city taxes.
I'm gonna talk about that.
But that would take a process just like it did 20 years ago.
Thank you.
40 years ago.
I'm trying to picture you laying on a golf course, and somehow that sticks in my brain.
Just because I said I was gonna ask, is there any way that you could provide us an update, how many calls the law enforcement respond to, and just, you know, echoing what Commissioner Hingal said regarding the fireworks, it was a process to get them banned, and I think, you know, I respect the process in bringing them back, and I do love fireworks, I support the fireworks, and then also, just wanted to give a shout out to the new barbecue restaurant, Most Wanted Barbecue, that is in the new, the old New Way Building right across the street here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Barbecue's amazing, definitely want to give a shout out to Amber, and so, anybody who's interested in coming out to support the Most Wanted Barbecue, it'll be opening this Thursday.
Yeah.
God bless you.
Yeah, don't have anything to add, hope everybody has a great week.
Okay, I wanted to talk about the fireworks, too, and I just, seeing all the, all the things on there and remembering some, some things in the past, this ban was upheld by a vote of the majority of citizens, not once but twice, I believe the last time it was 75% plus voted against allowing fireworks in the city limits. Frankly, I am disappointed in those who do not want to follow our laws, even the state laws, I know that M80s are banned in the state, but I hear them, and they scare the hell out of my dog, and a lot of people, and anyway, they are banned, but like I said, I hear several of them each year, do we have to, people are complaining about there is no enforcement, do we have to raise our taxes so we hire more officers, so there's more enforcement? I mean, why can't you be responsible for following the laws? I don't understand that. If you want to lift the fireworks ban, go ahead and get a legal petition started to place the question on the ballot again, our city clerk, Sarah Bodensteiner, can help with that. On another note, I believe those that are shooting the fireworks off are in the minority, they're just a really loud minority, and if the ban is lifting, lifted, then it'll be, everybody can shoot them off, I mean, it'll be everywhere, so, it may be even harder on our military members who suffer PTSD, and on our animals, and on our, my poor neighborhood with the, with the woods across the street, there probably no deer ever gonna come back again after all that party they had over there, anyway, it's just, yeah, go get a petition, if you want to have fireworks, go get a petition, and we'll have a vote.
Yeah, that's the only way to do it.
We're not gonna make that decision, the public needs to make that decision, if you want to do it, go for it, that's all I have to say, thank you. Everybody have a good week.
Motion to adjourn.
I got all fired up here.
I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.